Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the study session of April twenty-third. Adana, can you roll call, please?
Well, Councilmember Flush.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Marinesco.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
And I don't see Councilmember Gilmore.
Is we, we wouldn't do a motion for a session.
So.
Just kind of just slow it down. And we are waiting for our judge. Does our city manager have anything for us?
See. I can find it here. Um, and maybe you've all received, um, some relation issues in your under. My boss upstairs was being going out, uh, to schools. We have our normal media outlets, so press immigration program is going, including our, um, we need to part series. So, yeah, it's thirty days. We are. We're starting a movie. Which, um, sometimes takes me longer than we anticipated. So. At the same, uh, right now, get ahead of volume for, uh, for summer. Um, I reached out about the, um, AWC conference and their state of the sea volunteer opportunity. People get, uh, P N C. It's one of the key advantages. They're sure those programs.
Well, our Your Honor, the chair.
Yeah.
Welcome, Your Honor.
Hey.
You have a seat. You've got your name tag here. This is casual.
We're the only team that.
Yes.
Yeah. Sure. Okay, that's a slight, a slight say. First time we're in the same session. City Council last year. Let me hear that. That's, that's pretty significant. But, uh, I think all of you that, my evil district. We could have been a stage, you know? So, really, I, I mean, I think it's that, so release yourselves. I don't want to be this. Be clean as a little girl. But basically, we've got five stack members and security reports are hard. So you will know this is a chill. Can't see my birthday for your sessions. We have literally myself, William Person. Let's get fast. Let's squeeze for that. So I've introduced you to sixteen. Fourth history has been since two thousand one. As a clerk in King's Center. Um, there's seals, the predecessor, a voter. And Christina, who doesn't seem to just have status. And the kids getting back around the other party. I think quite a lot of these, they all give them more time. But she came with, like, my words as a legitimate volunteer. Of the legal system. He did some recon. Through community service, if there's ever been any, I spearheaded. Um, this city that's here. Uh, took her on, she was a volunteer, so right time. Eight, nine, I believe. They were finding they were well at her. Comes to see. To see. She gave something that checked her juvenile. Ask. To me. And so she said. Then, um, Corey, Sarah's queen, I'm just a assistant. She was still upstairs. And she's a very skilled. Court clerk, which also came to the building. Yeah, the forms, the way. Like, really, she was upstairs, but straight she was talking to her. You know, such a great asset, of course, that still. Christina, it's immediately, you know? If there's a procedure she was saying. You know, we deal with a lot of things. A lot of her body. On the procedures, you know, bankruptcies, debt records, questions, storage of files, a lot of your key files. Since all those there on the same. If the court needs to reform them or fix or be. The party doesn't, about a day. Or less than twice an hour. And that's, that's her struggle. Everybody has a skill. Giving to them. Uh, Cherry, uh, is here, is a phone call. The jail since two thousand seventeen. She's on a park bike. Uh, she's smiling. She sits out of correspondence, speaks his phone, she takes emails. She's used, only four of them. Sunday's on vacation. Right, so these are very funny. She'll be here in the morning, uh, since Sunday's. Point at all times. That's kind of like our group, like, members here in court. All you gotta copy, uh, General twenty-nine. Like, whatever is submitted all of course, especially city courts. There is long history, not here. There's long history, so jurisdiction, so. My spot, no belly gap. For example, if I can't have things go by. Uh, we're several branch. You know, it's, uh, maybe four years. We decide what I'm. Once you make that decision, you come back to this. Like, whatever is. Anybody new to the best state supreme. We also push them to, there is you. I'm upset, but it's sad, sadly. So, we have a very important relationship in that regard. Legal. Uh, that's going very. With, I don't like meetings. And it's amazing. Of course, there's. Everalls, that was, I think, that's probably. But at the end of the day, court is, you know, second. As well, what? What's important to that? It was a show, uh, you, you are shot there. And you're rest of the money show. You know, you stay. Have some again, you're speaking, you know, several. And the court knows that. It's not like we're looking for fun. Yes, that's. But you can use it more seriously. You apply them to each others. In this hall. In that place. The smallest. Our courts. I don't like to kind of encourage that, but. Where we find in this summer. I've heard a lot of, say here. I know what I've done this kind of, for example. You're going to see. They're all different. Most of people pay for that and sell. Our culture. Uh, the third. Our person. There's a use rate, so I buy work, yeah. It's like that. So. We kind of like it. But that's Thursday, but police there. But that's Thursday. I don't really go back to CNN. And that's today. Shot. So, that's your point. There's a lot of misconceptions also about we do day-to-day. Tomorrow, what do you know? Like, why do you want to have a favor or a crime? Free trials, like status, there is a good basis. Some people enter police guilty. You can use sentence. Some people enter suit or continuance, which is like contact and prosecution. That's. Service work. Stay in trouble, stay away from the store, maybe. Connect to me. Even they follow that plan for a year or two. Charged with this, this, or, and then. They'll fall through, they wait for actual trial. They shouldn't, since, since I've been sent. And to prove themselves, which might come in. Gut treatment, or something like that. So, a lot of stuff. First was every month, we have. Working out more languages. You know, plus a lot of mistakes. And so we'll have the required by the law. To do the whole work here, this is the first time. So, yeah. Of all special questions. I'm all through, it's fairly satisfied. Here's this, I'll say this. Treating very well. Two monitor, there's no points, two points. And we also have, you know, suspension, there's all there. Shot. That's very true. I just got to touch things generally, back a bit, in the new case service program. And as you find, like Cherry, it's been a while, I mean, it says. Good night.
Yeah, nineteen minutes.
So, so, yeah. So. And. That's a really hard program. And actually, last week we had scare room. On that, we can process, purchase, score, work. Your system. And thanks to city journey, I think, battle rounds, music, and, yeah, goodbye, happy. All the same time, contact that, I. I am, and others. And it is stake. We thought it was a whole, right? Um. They missed, uh, Chris's reports. With. Work groups, county jail services. Very blue, seems completely illegal. You know, work. So they realize. If you should, it's not very bad. That Jerry's effort to be seen that. What's important about that? Is those two B's, those one of those cameras, not me, that. In the scandal. Uh, Thursday, on the public works, you know, co-hosts, not sir. Already know, now I can give them safe. They have to shut up, since three hours. Space. And, you know, scan, something like that. So that's what it's supposed to be still. Do you think I learned? Maybe you'll hear, remember, I don't know if you got, okay. They, perhaps once came to somebody's. First. There's a stair, sorry, it's dangerous. You get it, country first. Going to you, like, you know. And it's, it's really powerful, it's, it's cheaper in jail. Those usually move, aren't you? So it saves you jail expenses at the same time, so, you know, the same. But also same time, it's usually lost, and it's, it's working off. And sometimes, it's. There's good, there's, I want to fail, I think. To, to tell. That's send it up, uh. So, or really good workers, getting forced back, and Cherry, a part of it, of course. And some systems, so. I spot this thing. Thank you. Side of garbage. Few weeks ago, I was told the general was, you know, almost here. And Cherry's, we started crying. As we said, fifteen years ago, this added to the bin. And so it's essentially stored stocks. Yeah, very personal. He has to be with my team as well. And it's. Quite a first state of mind. Basically, they're. You're sweet, I think. Yeah, and. Cherry's great, real working as people, we had, um, we had. I think it's like a work crew, let's do, I kind of car, you know, smoke, girlfriend. Ted. Cherry, your cell phone, like, um. You had four of them, that's that, what is your last alternative? Okay, to new Jersey service. Uh, no names, but it's been rad. Um, yeah, it's. It was raining, and we was really happy, fifty-six, we gave service, maybe it's, that wasn't. She was out there working hard, with all the bags of garbage. This young man was barely moving from bags. And then say, I got about five or six bags, Cherry's a big, from his, he didn't. She told me, I mean, she, I think, yeah. But she's still getting back home yet. And then told, don't tie the bags. It's gonna surprise. So. Obviously, it's, did I, I think, that it. Guys, it's a dollar. And later, it's, it's, that are banks, so we're like, there. Yeah. So, yeah, they don't first, so I went. It's not very cool. It's, it's. So I think we learned a few lessons. Okay. So. Pursued, as I said, so. So, come back. So. I think resource has a lot of good things, I was gonna say the same. Give back to me, but, uh, it's, learn. Has learned something, he's learning, we're, you know, uh, yeah. It's for one day. I really, I said. Our resource guys are, did not care. Just, even forty-five. You sign up for this. And, yeah.
Are, are there limitations of what they can do? Can they, like, paint buildings and graffiti and all that stuff as well?
Do things green, for private property. That's the deal, kid. Uh, but.
The city property, though.
City property, yes, um. They could. If you knew about it, a lot of the projects, you would, um, I'm not impressed with them. You know, citizens. Call the city, say. Special garbage, they're done with in a particular street, particular place, they put a trail. A trail of the wire, right? Right. They're, oh, oh, they're involved, they happen. Yeah. And to be honest, we have a, this can add. All. This is. Trails, some sites, lots of this. And then, my leg, it's, it's that right off, right? He just shows up a garbage. Out. Even bother, and some people are physically unable to. We're getting, that's called our cycling service. So like, it's a big. Some other non-party, uh, pretty complicated. It's, that, that, that's like, we're, uh, speaking. You could. I think, work group was, a young child. So, except. Next, there in court. As everybody's staff, you know, here. Or languages. We currently have eleven, twelve people in court right now, at thirteen graduates. We do track, we prepare in three years, we're having around three years entry, or starting to be, so. Under a bad, uh. Just statistics. At the close, three years, all of which. Some of the polling, right, it's so far, sadly, we're winding. Pretending, almost, so, etc. All the best, the records, you know, be this. Those in the program, uh, some do well, some don't. You sign up, uh, they're agreed. That we want to be successful. So there's a lot, um, encouragement, uh, to say them. There's our partner, that program. We also, uh, attractions here, but I'll make, with us resources, that's about. And, uh. I said most about. Not areas, but all, all the time. Yeah, they have agreed, they want to make. What that means is if you agree. You can use this situation. Writing reports, our apology, we're agreed to, that's what it takes to go through anything. And it's, all been done, but time for nothing. The goal be that we stay clean, we stay sober. A lot of them, we can get our prior sources. So, one. And still someone was that, some of them, they were, our language. Stay in our language. Because a lot of that persons. So, you might, you know. Uh, some are teaching each second language. But one, yeah, and he decided to go back to college. So there's a lot going on in trade. There are base difference, we can call it, we can just, like, screen, for, for these. We also should be proud of that, so we are. One, six, so, so, and then here. And we are indeed. We would state, our company, and we see an irony. We have a plan to, drug court. Which is, printed out, there without the state of laws, you have a problem. Within a whole word, we're selling us. This much rules of law, which I, I'm, I'm sorry. This is a very important area, uh. In community court. And we can buy that. Into one. Words, nobody else is that. And far that, was also that. My work is, we're having, just the science, it's like, that's just a good analogy. And so. And this is some help from some professors, requests. As well, to help pay this compensation work. You get all the guy money, it's required by law. All this taxes are. Yeah, you stole a lot from kids that had. And, and, see. And that, still a lot of work, we've got it together, and I have five heard events. More than since. So far, so good. The programs are sensitive. Same with I. Yeah, there's a raise in relationship between drug use and accomplishments. Some people are not able to use drugs to, you know, make a voice, spell a name. Question. Simple stress, it's part of question. So, it's, uh, competition. Some people who use drugs. Then, you know, they have. So, for example. Destroys your brain, physically. And you actually see it, the next, because that's. It's an abstract. It kills, you know, most of our brain. At first. It's, you're, it's horrible, it's. I, never. However, never, very, very happy, very, very sad, never, it's gone. So, every time we use that, that, for that, of course, they die. Um. But also, you can, right? I say this for the justice. You can become this way. Of judges. Daytime use. We never. See something. Yeah, so. We're doing the best to deal with those who want help, you know. So, you can make sleep, want to get better. Really, cost of the point that he wants. But he had a, that's. A lot of the point of the fight. After you watch, like, the jail right after. Right? But that might really want, you know. Get very far. And, speed of the dream, right? So you could not, some wants to get. Here goes, next, there is court security, and it kind of speaks for itself. But thanks, we cancel that, because of course, here is a second year. Uh, my, that's a good time. Some competition for us. Kind of things we don't like, so. It's greatly appreciated, since two thousand nineteen, as part of our security, our security officer, we got two so far. And we both retired in one person. So, Curry, of course, he also, yeah, thirty years of W C B. Five years, which is, which is, of course, there is no part. It's high skill, not a space. Our goal, the court, is to have a. I know, maybe I am, I'm about, next thing I hear. C L A, C W S, evocation program. Just more of her name, and so.
So, the computer program that. Of course, used in the state of Washington was very old. Uh, the J I S program, or the new zone. It's, it's the old glass screen with the green slurs. Yeah, and it's all coded, and it's incredibly difficult to, in, in this day and age, to. Enter data into, um, and. You know, in a good way, uh, it, it, it takes a long time to enter everything in. And so, um, A O C, the administrative office, the court has been working on the new program for a very long time. And I think that the new program, the C L J C M S program, yes, is retired. And. We should actually hear, be getting ours sometime in the next year, so. We're fourth, uh, the fourth section of the state to, to get it, um, and. And they've worked on, um, I believe, two sections now, um, where they got it in. And everything's been working really well, um, with the new program and the switch over. Uh, but for us to switch over. We've been working for the last about three years, um, getting rid of old cases out of our system. Trying to purge everything that can be purged, so that when they do the switch over, we don't have a run in the junk. And so, um, Christina's been heading that up, and doing a great job, and, um. We did, we've come a long way there, um, the A O C just recently sent out a whole list as a reminder of what has to be done for the changeover. And we, my chairman, just lost it all, so. Because of the work over the last three years, we're almost there, we're, we're almost ready. The last thing is getting our paper files that. That are actual active files into PDFs. So, we need to scan every one of those files into a PDF. And now that Cody's on board, he, he's. He knows what we need to do, and. So we'll be working closely with him soon, so he can just help us with how we're going to do it, and then we're gonna start doing it. So, um, hopefully by the end of next year, we'll be papers. So, when, um, anyone comes to file something with the court, we will scan what they hand us and hand it back to them. And we don't keep, we're not keeping the new. So, everything will be, um, digital. And with the brand new system, I, I saw it in, um. Um, I think it was last May of Congress. I saw it working, and it's beautiful, so we're all very excited about it. Um. So, yeah, that's, that's the next really big thing for us, is getting switched over to the new system. Getting rid of all those paper files that we have, that. It's taken off.
It's not to scan in P D S, yeah.
Yeah.
And also, court files now, pulling apart. Select newspapers here, various, make, American. And they wanted to copy. Oh, not states.
Yes, court file.
And like, it's best of last, so. First. Every, not that. But also, we have confidential personnel, which nobody's seen all. You know, so about, you know, treatment, they don't have to treat. Survival, it's, I think, like, yeah, so. Those. So. Are just scanning, yeah, as I said, make sure that we have. Competition, which is separate.
So every.
Accidentally, you have something confidential, so.
Right, every file will have some violence to it, so it, it's. It's complicated, but it, it's gonna work, and.
So. I'm, your partner, I guess. I mean, so. And we're just, far advanced, these are kinds, hearing spirit courts. I've been here for years, so. And there was, so, spirit courts will be responded. And, so, very, you know, violence, you know, it's, it's, it's bad, that's what I'm saying. It's, I'm using, I'm basically, and then that's. Right? So, they were not following, I'm, I was, I got here. Uh, here. It's, it's, what's that? We're, we're, that's, we're basically, it's a. There is, it's, it's. Which also means, it was just, yeah, it used to be set. So, yeah, so if you're, it's, uh, it's not working. That's not real.
That happened yet?
Oh, it, it happened. Oh, it happens, oh my god, it does happen.
I've got a backup, my best case, yeah, it's also courts cooperate with each other, and so samples. This court is small courtroom, so this court actually has some trials in. You know, what works. The temporary hall. Out here. Something that's gonna be spread out, you know, seriously, I should be sure, somebody else, there was. And on the other side, the, before we got this way here, but. That's true. Really good, you give us eighty thousand dollar devices right now. That is used to be this year. Uh, you sheet that corners, jazz on him. All that's in steering cameras, you know. Fourth camera back here, it's supposed to time the setting. For security reasons, the like him, all that, that's next, I also. Here, it's here, and it happens every. Very scary, and uh. Now, the best things that were happening. I'll be very thankful. Because they always have a smaller screen out here, and they were connected by cables. Bringing out all the time. And that back corner over there, it's a piece of clearly a little cave, but like, since it's sky, like. And you have like, play those buttons, wiggle and kick it, if you're lucky, you might really use me instead of you. Or you might not. Like, see, it's happening at the meetings here, um, it was a dinosaur, it could not be fixed, it's breaking down. Law enforcement, it doesn't constantly go down. Law enforcement, it goes again. Read four by six, before every single thing, we're not doing it, it's not, it's not, it's violent, it's like that. This thing we do to court, they use it, bring them back. Uh, one time, law enforcement. And this system is now kind of by Wi-Fi. So no cable network, because we can, that your court area itself. Anywhere, so that has Wi-Fi in there. So when you guys contract and put this all in, law enforcement, it'll be there, it's all just shows up on here, like clockwork. Reconnection, take care. Mason County Jail, I had a person who owned Mason County Jail, you know, I T V, it was a woman there. I T V, so smart was about that, but that's what we did, but now, where's the dialogue? So it's like, it's like that, it's how it's described. And so, we can't escape. It's like this one. Also, we have this. Watching our questions, so, well, of course. So the day, Monday. We did soon hearing. H R. Stand up by myself. Because you. You guys. And the game is system. Um, yeah, also, your your prosecutor. Is here in person, I'm gonna interpretate, or. Always, your own zip. Saves exactly what you, I I can see that here in person. And so it's worked out, right? There is a subtle paper about both defenders, prosecutors, and defenders destroyed. There is statewide shortage. You know, one, that that risk being against. Seven. They don't want to come to the law, it's a big deal, um. And he, last year, it's solid. But still. Thousand court defenders. Since a very dependent. He turns. The court, sterile, other defendants, who's so hard. I'm in the band, and it's a court area update, and maybe it's just for. But it's got really tense. It's a state like. You know, states record some of the urge of the case. Defenders choosing out of the order of defenders, who will not assist. Except, we can, it's been very nice, um. But, I mean, Michigan was in, it's probably right, and I don't think some, uh, six thousand dollars hour. Complex. Your. So, we, there is this case. You cannot ask someone for a settlement. Accounting is a system, cases, cases for. That's not. Yes. They won't, um. Because they can. We made it work. But this matters as well. It's only first, it's a show. Accomplishment for needless, Roger. And our common, it's also guarded, and this is about. They would not be a part of this, let's say. So sweet, he wishes, he was part of it, he would make sure. Feel there is. Yeah, then the wire. Figure that one out. And.
Excuse me, I was wondering if we could touch a little bit more on on uh bar association lower in the case count? And how it's going to affect you, the county, and citizens of of our city? Because basically, what I'm reading into it is is not enough attorneys out there. One, it's gonna be, it'd be very expensive, even if there was. And the county needs about twenty more attorneys in the next couple of years, um, that aren't out there, so what happens to these? To these people who are breaking the laws, um, breaking into houses, robbing, stealing your car, and uh.
So especially on superior. Yeah. In the certain or seeking the process. Uh, for here, sure was scared, uh, because you're looking at, I'm definitely sure, possibly, if you can find somebody that hired.
It's a supply advantage.
Yes.
Completely turn up.
So, harm is, uh, I guess, I try to be optimistic, this is my major. Sweet Bar Association has made regulations, it calls, air later station, three times. I don't love better, but still, I can, and I'm also former prosecutor. I know he cares about prosecutor case of that. Will just work out, it's a goddamn, um. But, but I'm still a defender, it's not a certain case, that's bar association. Bar association, which is mean a fresh nation. The state's. I don't believe you did not turn out. This dire sounds, and the only good sign of that is that. You see possible. Ask for. Similar guidelines, you would place by emergency. Can you, there's a emergency, and it's, which may be statewide, it better. And the states will go and say. So somewhere there, they know it's a shortage of defenders. You ask me, the proceeds is. Now, there's a common theory. Cities and counties and trees. My team, I just, that material, we see us.
Yeah.
Returns. Some of our, and don't assess them in case, ever. Hence, one little theory. That if the lower case level defenders. They can do a good job. They're being nice, right? And, but no connection to reality. There are not a mathematicians on the Chinese system. Too big for the. So that, if you're a district board, you can't even buy a suspended, or is.
That's the answer I was trying to get at, yeah.
Here's prosecuting.
Yeah.
Uh, no balance license. Right, you know, persons mistletoe, in the county, those very problem. You see, possibly. You're more likely to prosecute for crime than seeing. Right? Where's we find? So, if you read a paper, and you're attacking. Sure. That's, we're gonna prosecute. And I'm passing sorry, obviously, like, make choices. To not charge something, something. If they're not, it's it's per you, and my business, it's a fresh. Uh, violations are now, company crimes are. Yeah, we're worried. Well, go back, uh, we were talking about some diversion ideas, the current prosecutor, to avoid for a lot of work. Think it's really trying. Uh, that I can see, that says we prosecute, that plans for me, and version program, the pure station, which is good, and learn from the people. Uh, but I understand, taking a case, you know, it's. That's a straight, exciting, but a case is not, sounds a lot, but. We we need a science in this here. Process. Still, yes, why, some cases. Is we have a version program. Where we go like, okay, six month time, here you go to the benefit. For our speaking service with Jerry. No new events, six months, no missing whiteness, due to the service, which is your type of action. Be better, I say it's good time, see this, be better. The public defender still has to advise the person, the necessary idea of that, so is that a full case? Or is that a case, right? Is that a court case? Right, and that is reality, if you look at. And then the law, so that I, I pretty much bounce this week. And, that's good for peace. So it is kind of invasion violation, which is not a occasion, they can't expect it. So, yeah, please, kind of, some question, does it power? As if they don't do something. Someone, I'm like, you know, absolutely. It's gonna be reasonable, and citing. Probably gonna be a venture, it's not an exercise in the house, so I think it's a big venture, I'm a part of that, it's a big venture. Um, uh. Pressure things that happen, right? So we're all kids, I'm I'm great, and you know, probably had. Your grandma, whoever raised you, or possibly everybody. You. Who's my idea, like, you practice, so, for, for, sorry, I'm. Mom said, it's your room, right? That's like, ask your body, and then to be older. You have a theory of public shame, right, if most people, so litter out their cars, something, and sad was what's on, you know. That's exactly. Then we have civil. Facts. Try to. Right, soccer. It's a similar. Yeah, like. Got the service, assumption. So, so, yeah, certainly, so. Then we cross, cross the line, decide, it's not crime, it's like, it's a side. Some of this, less crimes than others, so this is one big long continuum, so the question is. Say, to you, that we just. There's something you should know, so. It's really helping. Uh, represented, ready for this area, it's very active. Here, some doctors and teachers in rural areas are. Everybody got the, you stay in rural area. Legislature, in Republicans, still actually working together in session. To affect the critical votes. In rural area, which is. Not sure how you figure out. Teachers get that sometimes in rural areas, nobody must say, or family, or must have. Do this, we should, that's. Those teachers, you know. Supply is. But it is on the same. I'm getting lost, you can even. And that pulse, you got a lot of. That change, I mean, that's.
Your heart.
We're at, so, it's it's changed more.
I mean, I mean, we definitely know that if you don't hold people accountable for crimes, that. Crime goes up, I mean, we saw that with pursuit law, I mean, car theft would up, what, thousand percent? In states.
Law enforcement is still back.
Yep, they do.
Soon enough, it's about the court. Doesn't exist for us, you know, it shows up. But we're worried. Anyway.
So you think we're gonna need a couple more attorneys here in the city themselves, both defenders?
I hope we vote, we're sound, very, yeah, well. And then the state's got. Rolling ball, while you're trying to push up the, I mean, it's the best way to start.
You're contracted, the public defender, yeah, we have a lot of time, yeah, so. Attorneys that work in his office, because they wanna work in other counties, where they need more money.
Last one to the county, but I saw this, you know, it's.
Didn't we, didn't we raise, raise that, raise that, just, just like weeks ago, or?
And he's, and he's always, you're, so he's always that, right, at the end of mid, he goes, it's not.
Supply and demand, right, and it's, as, as demand increases, the cost of the services will, you know, will increase with the tour stations that. Makes things.
It's not just the court, it's also law enforcement, pressure, so it's, it's like that. That is a short, they follow. Engineer, our youngest, you know.
I think we're, we're looking at, yes, we have a defender, and a prosecutor under contract, um. We have a defender, stretchers. Some that's two thousand eight. Years, yeah, uh, that's his. Here, local, so. Regular, and, um, when we went out to, um. For our fees, for prosecutors, response. It's been beneficial, eventually. It served as a prosecutor's soul, and not, you know, they're from the practice, well. Happens. They're not located, hopefully. Me, gonna be in other jurisdictions that are maybe closer to home. And that they.
There is a meeting. State Supreme Court, presiding, justice. We didn't see anything. We, I will be, so. Because most of them sit there quietly, this listen, they kind of say nothing, he's a good guy, yes, it's very important.
Well, please let us know if you heard any hearings that are happening next session, that maybe we could support individually or as a group.
Well, I put on. The county. Kind of get a task. So they can communicate to the Supreme Court. That will do the state. By the time that task force is ready, very patient, citizens are. So. Association, Washington Cities, or any rural cities, all, you name it all. Timing that's telling. Right, you can't clear against persons, you must see me less than. Maybe you can. There's not any. Every city, you know. Comes here. Seattle, the county is. Many more countries, you know. So, so, I mean.
I think Peter told.
Really, yeah, bro. Same.
I think Peter told us in our meeting that we were in, Captain, I remind you, that if, if, uh, Seattle took every single public defender in the state. They still wouldn't have enough. For what they're gonna be looking at in the next couple of years.
Right, so you you have.
Just for that.
You really don't have anything. You know, that sounds really nice. This is the reality. And reality is, you know, some ender. Prosecutor, right? Or defender, so. It's hard. You know, it is, it's hard work, it's public service, and. And if you do that, you should expect it to be part of. Some processing. That is. Two months, I'm in the sixth year. We'll check out days. All updates. Practice. It's always service. Doesn't raise the most other defenders in my series last ten years. Series social. It lasts about ten years, and they go somewhere, um. Part of work. And it's always service, so. tirelessly, see. Have recruitments. You know. Everybody. That's what must. Is. If anything, if you are, that can be the same way. Right, my son. Can't compare, this really is a competition. That's the land of the game. Exactly, and it's out of your skills. Raise my arms, I'd rather do it very, very twice. So I'm. But we had a problem like this. But you can tell, yeah. So later. So. You need. About. Cities, counties, all the person.
So really not to the bar association, we should be appealing, but the state's report.
No, yeah, okay, yeah. The state's report is big in the city.
Okay.
And the industry of office. Yeah, sale and retention. Better. Acts.
That's, that's good.
Definitely with the timing. Good well.
We know the power. The season stream of justice, I respect them, again. They also lack officials, um. They remove the trial. And so. So. They don't care. This is on us. At least now. Let's see. I only have to read this one, I'm also, I mean, I missed that. And the court, so. So you. Congratulations. You know. Questions, so. Possibly.
I, Ms. Roca, what's your, what's your, like, case load here a week?
That's.
Yeah.
It does change every week, um. Ash. I'd say. Yeah, and and that's true, so, uh, when someone shows up for their arraignment, there's usually a pre-trial or two. There is definitely one, but it could be more than one pre-trial. Depending on the negotiations between the public and the prosecutor. Um, so there may be multiple hearings before they get to a sentence or entering into a. But, um, there's. Yeah, just, just, I guess, I'm, I would say, um, Mondays for arraignment. We usually have ten or less, um, people right now, people that are coming in to. Wash a warrant or take care of a warrant with one judge. So that they can get set for court and be on their way to taking care of their cases. Um, we take warrants for that. And we schedule people if they call, uh, we have them come in and sign a promise to appear. Um, most of the time, they can do that. If it's a high priority warrant or the judge has set a little bit larger deal, they'll let us know. There's no promise to appear for this person, if they come in, they're going to be arrested. And we let them know. So they know upfront that. Come on in, but you're going to go to jail until you see the judge. So Mondays probably about ten minutes, um, depending on how busy we can. Um, or holiday week. Um, Tuesdays, we usually have. Um, if it's in in custody calendar, two or three, we could have. Um, if it's an infraction calendar, maybe three to five at the most. It's not habitual, yeah. And then. Wednesdays, I'd say probably twenty-five people, maybe on Wednesday. My, yeah, twenty-five or thirty. Thursdays and Fridays are. Um, if someone's in custody overnight, we hear them on Thursdays or Fridays. Um, and we also have a trial call, yeah. So those are people that didn't show up to their other hearings, their trial dates here, and that's when the warrants are. Shoot on those cases, so. Most commonly, we have a court every day. It's rare that we don't have some court, some, um. But.
There's a lot of issue.
Yes, yeah. Um, and I do have reports that I can run if you're ever interested, and it gives. Every detail of what's filed. What type of cases are filed, which ones go to selection, um, you know, which fines are being paid. What the outcome is on most cases, so, I mean. There is a program that I can run that can shoot.
So it's probably a day, of course, it's. That's it. So I'm hearing.
A lot.
Probably shoot for. Create files. On laws. People come to the front counter and. And goes out, maybe you're a district court, no reason to matter, that's the case, this worries people, just come down here, maybe you want to off the streets. No reason at all, but this water is a lot. Stand, stay with. We want them, and it's been water, checking above everybody, yes. Uh, we'll stay with this. But he's mainly all, he's waiting for evaluation, so let's see. And we gotta keep track of him somehow, and, uh. I stand for people, because he comes here every Friday, that's, that's our, um. Sometimes, so it's a bit. That's. And, you know, myself, you know, it's, like, I don't always, you gotta get prepared for something, sometimes you get it, sometimes you don't. Say. And so. And to get anybody in place, it was called. But it's. Back there. Yeah, you know. The Saturday, she's so spare, I'll be at. So, but I'll. Show. Support. Also, change all of. Asking laws every year, some of them, but it's a little time we lost, but yeah, right. Um, yeah, that's. So we got like, everything. We now have possession laws, and in fact, well, you know, small. And jail. Are we missing? Are we trying that? It's fine. So that's a little bit for the cases. You know, it's also those. What's that all? It's still. So. So. If it's. And so he says. And. Yes. So this is a sentence. I've already learned that. Charge. Whether it's. How long should a jail to turn? Even teacher, their individuals, getting samples. Do you want to start a class stage? So I tell them, like, one D Y. We love the first. Especially I thought that. People. Right, it's. Place of jail. That I wish you could have treated them, student them. You say, but. Starting a little work. At the next time. You know, jail monitor. Usually try to treat. Stay three hundred. And. Thirty, much. That's where most guys, so go to. How long? Positions, courts. You know, law. So. Now. You're proven, for example. You, you know, you go, you're just like, I. So. And the good site. A lot. Change everyone else, so. You know. Change my. Other drivers to. Someone's in jail. Three, three days or longer, when they're in this, 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 say. Where no chair, change from citizens. They're gone. They were twenty-nine days, so they haven't been here. If they have job, they're looking at panel for that. Jail, no need for my cell. Who's your guy? Now you got the. Somebody's still. Challenging. Almost person has this. To get some food. Sheltered. See a jail, hundred days, and. Five words. They're really all dramatic, so. We have Asian process, like, the long ways away, and having more than this. See. I'm kind of all. Like all this. That's.
Did, uh, how, how's it been with Miss Wally now that we've, we, last year, we. You know, we authorized.
So. Uh, myself, for students, sort of. I'm a mini person. Those guys, right? They have my guys that work for you, plus energy stations. No shortage questions, I'm serious. Yes, so with the fairness, uh, with the fairness, so. But they have an area for you tops. Area. Area that's where they're. Have a. So. Box there. Situation. They really got middle law there, their DCRs, from Olympia, from Smaller, they're gonna start here, we might bed. There's a rule there, I suppose, it's. So evaluations have, have a better. If they're installing, you know, the resources, some more than I was. Very responsive, very polite. Yeah, so he doesn't wanna come to jail, but I'll summon him. Between them, because. And I'll show you. Say, send jail, okay? And love doing that maybe twice. The third time was Miss Wally. Bring them by any, you go of course, that's necessary without her being, but. Which means we have. They got that method. They have a hot type. System of overs. Uh, it's like, yeah. I'm. And to prove that part of help. Being for flowers. No movement. Regular time. You have policies, you know. Just, I don't want to. Yeah, there's a request responder, which is the key, versus civil. See somebody who's struggling. Want to see the team. And help them, so. Actually take them away, check them in somewhere, not just make a tie, but to bits. Um. On that piece, so. It's still recording them. Usual stays, underneath a tower, super vibration. Just me. Seven, moving ends. And that fourteen days, that's since the second seven, SS. So we'll separate here, you know, a month out. We'll see about, again, time period, no, I don't think you're seeing. So we're still a little bit of a channel wall with the next court date coming up, it might, maybe it's time for a while, get a warrant, and rush on, but. My class here is. Which you said, so why is it that? You know, little person who, yes, confessed to. So I'm. It's like. Professor, she's. I'm visiting. Of course, to. Since. Since. Which. I'll see. See. It's something like that. And lock, lock against civil, in Walter, you know. So, well, that's not worse, um. I think in the day picture. We're a bit of a, because it's a justice system, we made, not eight, three, but we don't care. The health system. They can't read. So. Uh, so I just.
How's these here know that they're there, that, why are they legal?
Was that?
How's these here know that they were there?
Because the spy doesn't know.
Oh, okay.
So even that's out. This, they'll call the state, that's the responsibility, so they're, they're the one who's the sheriff, by the way. You know. And we can deal with assessments, that's how we deal with. You know. It's even, also, in dedication, it was.
And the judge is standing order with Mason County Jail and Miss Wally. Uh, means they don't have to call the judge and pass him, or get a court order, it's a standing order, so. They recognize the symptoms, they call, and then they're off, and then they let us, whatever.
Because in my respect, in the work of the big picture. Again, I do that, maybe like, in my opinion, but you know. Um. Your thoughts, or, of course, so. The idea is a mess of mind shopping. I got banned a few years ago. It's important, um, you all there here. And I'd rather somebody lock up in the health center, gets involved in no healthcare. As opposed to confesses to somebody, you see, that I can't, again, again, here, again, because of that, in office, they try.
Makes sense to me.
It is. Sort of long dark, I mean, so we can get a no house there. It's not a guarantee, I'm sure. But it's better. It's better. So, but others is. So, yeah, I'll, I'll say it, by the way, so, uh, call, you know, six, five days in your, whatever hours, say. And so, the part of the job.
Even, even if it, even if it's, uh, out in the county, they can't get ahold of a county judge, they call you.
I got, I got a rotation risk, no, I thought.
Yeah.
So, yes, kind of go to justice, you know, they're calling me. And I think, we got before last. The colleges, you know, was supporting the judge. The college is, you know, was supporting the judge. In this. They call. Three. I love that. Sounds like.
Sorry about that, but we appreciate you answering the call.
I did wanna.
It's supposed to be a city vote.
I did want to touch real quick on probation. So. For many years, Venus McCord contracted with Mason County probation. At sixty thousand dollars a year. And they tracked the people that were sentenced. And when they saw that they were reoffended or they didn't get their treatment, whatever. We would set a probation hearing and they would come in and probation officer would go before the court with that person and the whole process. In twenty sixteen, we ended that contract with Mason County. Well, who's going to check up on the people that are sentenced to see if they've been reoffended? So what the court came up with is that if the city would give us a permanent part-time person. Maximum hours of sixteen hours a week. Then that person can do some of the clerk's work, like sending out all the notices for hearings. And. Getting the warrants ready for the judge and doing all of the.
D O C.
Yeah, D O C letters, like letters from prisoners to the board. And getting on the chief, she does quite a few things that has been taken off of the court clerk's table. So on Friday, the two court clerks, the two full-time court clerks. Since twenty sixteen. They have about fifty cases every Friday that they go through. And basically, they just keep setting these review hearings for everyone that's on probation. They go through case by case by case. They check to see if they reoffended, they see. Have they done their treatment? Have they done alcohol information school? So they're checking all of that. If they find something hasn't been done, then they notify the prosecutor. This person hasn't done this, prosecutor then files on them. So it's a probation of sorts. They're the ones tracking it, so.
So.
Yeah, yeah. So that's that's how the probation goes here. So the people don't slip through the cracks and. Especially with DUIs, we DUIs are checked every three months. A lot of other cases are checked every six months, but there's still. About forty to fifty on a Friday calendar that have to be gone. So they usually trade off like one clerk will do one Friday and next clerk will do the next Friday. Because especially if Wednesday's been a heavy calendar day and we still have reports that they're working, but. That's how probation's been here since twenty sixteen and it's worked really well.
So you 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 have that sixteen hour person, okay. I don't know if you were asking for that or not. So I was looking at Mark, trying to get his question if uh.
Yeah. No, no, no. No. We have her and she only works.
Sometimes it's a meeting.
Yes, she only works what she's needed to work. So she rarely actually gets that sixteen hour mark. It's usually between ten to thirteen hours a week. But she comes in and she gets all of those things that so the courts have the time to be able to do the probation.
How is um force used nowadays? What's the what?
With one person there right now. So. The exact range you go with the size of something else. So very. Last sentence. And. So force sixty-five dollars. Spawning.
One thirty. Yeah, and.
Series B.
Yeah, and it just went after one thirty-six.
So it's probably just same files. Yeah, yeah. Or shoot. Of course, sixty-five dollars. So if somebody's sentenced or they create a sentence. Basically, you let them know about it. Works is contacted, they were routed, so you know, they continue very soon. I bring up the works. And works. And. So I was doing the first one. And and. Because. And it's great. Last time I saw a long period was. Part of. Here's one person finally.
When the guy was cutting the. Was that Cadillac converters?
No.
No.
It was breaking the cars all over us. Nonstop. And could have been charged. So can't come here.
Funny. Maybe here.
All of our. We have our. Some. So it's true by thought, it's one of those I think is very common. Then it's. Over. Since. Bringing in the bars to students. Workers for eight. I hear people. Virus agent, it was he was one person, right? And so it's like, you're not. I've not seen since, so. And also they don't have a lot of so there's.
It's been since last November.
So it's my job regularly. You see that pattern? She was at a. Kind of. Isn't the fight employer spreading visually justice? And. Then they would get in trouble, right? Yeah, so it's a whole situation. Lot of. I sure. See.
Alright.
What if one of your staff members has everything up in their head? Is unavailable. What if so what if they get sick? What happens with some kind of plan? You know what I mean? Like, you know, what do you do then?
That's why you two cars, sorry, there's not. So I seriously doesn't.
That that actually has only happened. One time in twenty-three years that our two clerks were seen at the same time. And it was actually me and another thirteen years ago. When I flew this way. And so the the court administrator and the judge reset all the cases to another day to. Put the whole orders.
So we're kind of that minimal about. Covering the people get cases to say, you know, we can operate one clerk if not for long. Cause then windows closed up here except we're cheering and show up.
But I I am in the middle of session training with our even clerk, so she. She has a lot of information on what I do. And so at a time how she's able to do the most important things. And then our other clerk and the support. You you choose me.
There's a plan and I can't ask when she's. But. She's her opponent judge, she made that decision. But. It was out of application. And so we thought. That's happens. She wants it, she's all by.
But she's never going in right?
I'm not knowing anything. I've been here for.
I gotta ask her what she said.
Well, I've been at the court since two thousand one, but I've been at the city since ninety-six. I was a nine-one-one dispatcher. Before Macecon was Macecon, it was Shellcon and I worked back there then. I worked in the old. So.
So she's got you.
It's gonna get sick.
No?
No.
No, that didn't got you.
Right.
She.
We are, I mean, it's tight, yeah.
Well, I asked, and I know this is totally morbid, but I used to work for the government and we had one guy who knew so much about certain things. He had a stroke. And then they pulled me in and said, you have to learn this job. There was no news. And I was just calling anybody who knew anything about anything.
Well, and luckily we have the administrative office that works in Olympia, so they can tell that stuff to you. Really anything that has to be done. Also, we have resources like I have a listserv. Where I can go out to all of the other court administrators in the state. He has the same with other judges, so.
You have a good net, okay. Well, I mean, it's a valid question. What happens if this particular peer breaks down?
Certain throughout the organization.
Right, yeah.
Very literally done seeing a smaller organization.
Exactly.
Cause we've seen it more forever, right? Guys.
Yes.
Corey, Corey knows most of what her student knows, but not all of it, right? So yeah, she's gonna believe you need. Pretty. But of course, she's like. Three blocks away, so the court. We can ask all the next. And they wouldn't hold us to say, you know, help them. And we're still. So. Unless we work it out, we will.
Right.
We'll find a way over there.
Okay.
And. Our environment is see force pretty nice. So there. He's on. So. The rotation. So we will get. So still in the court.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Judge?
I just wanted to thank you for being innovative and keeping us current. And just one step ahead of the curve. On what on what we're seeing out there, especially in terms of uh of the court and how we're dealing with. Different. Excuse me. How we're doing, how we're dealing with the different. Apologies or well, we have. She went away. The the different court cases and how they they come out and how you're dealing with sentencing and. Re. Reorganizing how where they're going and how they're how they're serving. So thank you so much.
Okay, well, the bottom line is. Thanks to people. I was. This is. They did you well. I want this.
Safety.
Right, right, spacing. When you listen to your man, he said. You're honestly involved. And sometimes they think of this big picture. Alright, anybody else? Great information. I really enjoyed the presentation and the conversation. Does anybody want a tour of Judge Skrill's operation before we adjourn?
You're also always invited at any time the court doors open, come on in and watch court. You know, if you want to, come on in and watch court, but some people really enjoy it and some people want to stay away.
Yeah. That's good.
I've been here a few times.
The best of benefits when he comes in and goes, I'm sorry, can you say? That's great, so.
Okay, def- definitely a great conversation tonight. Any new items for discussion tonight? The manager. Well, then we're gonna call this meeting adjourned at seven twenty-four P M. I would say meeting study.